Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. I ask that you please mute your phones if you are participating on the conference call line, and also anybody who silences any electronic devices. Please stand for the prayer by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge by Councilman Jackson, Ward 2.
Father God, as about 49, we give you our prayers, Lord. We thank you, God, for this new year, and as we enter this new year, Father, we ask you that you protect us every day, Father, that you give us wisdom, Lord, you give us unity, Father, as we conduct city business. God, we thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for our sins. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, sweep the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're participating on the phone, whoever don't have your phone muted unless it's your time to speak, please mute your phone. Your background noise is echoing in the chamber. That brings us to Agenda Order of Approval. Do we have any changes? Mr. Ankerson? No. Announcements, Mr. Ankerson?
Agenda, we got a vote.
Oh, do we have a motion to approve the Agenda Order of Approval?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Mr. Ankerson.
The United States Baseball and Soft Daddy Registration is open until February 9th, and offices will be closed Monday, January 15th in observance of the birthdays for Martin Luther King Jr. and Robert E. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. We don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is approval of the doctative claims for the purchase of two vehicles from Clearwater Solutions pursuant to the agreement made with the termination of contract by our City Clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery. It's been provided to us online and also in our package. So that is the presentation. It's just us cleaning up, us purchasing the equipment, what was left owed on some equipment that they had that we now will continue to use in public works with H2O. Any public comments on that business agenda item? Do we have a motion from council to approve the doctative claims for the purchase of the two vehicles from Clearwater Solutions pursuant to the agreement made with the termination of contract in our agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
He must be on.
Councilman Anderson, no comment?
No comment.
Okay. Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the doctative claims. That's by our City Clerk and Comptroller, Ms. Teresa Montgomery. As in the previous, they've been provided to us online for residents in the council and provided in our council package. Do we have any public comments? No. Do we have a motion to approve the doctative claims?
I make a motion. We approve the doctative claims provided that all entries thereon are true, correctly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
None.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're all approved in one motion unless somebody wants to remove one for discussion on the board. Consent agenda item number one, receive October 2023 finance reports. Two, approval of water and sewage adjustments for January 2024 in the amount of $48,357.88. Three, resolution directing the placement of lanes on properties located in Goche, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the City of Goche to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, Section 21-19-11. Four, approval of a limited use agreement between the City of Goche and Jackson County, Mississippi for the 2024 Jackson County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day to be held at the Singan River Moss Site. Five, authorization to accept an emergency watershed protective program grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Natural Resources Conservation Service and authorization to approve matching funds. And six, approval to execute a certificate of compliance with contracted parties for terms and conditions of attachment C subaward, terms and conditions for contracted parties with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for Mississippi Municipality and County Water Infrastructure Program for funding related to sanitary sewer mains rehabilitation and citywide lift station projects. Does anybody want to remove one? If not, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Let's discuss.
Somebody had a question about it, but he asked it after you know already we said about it. He had a question about what we just approved.
I asked council if that wanted to remove?
No, not a council, but citizen.
We'll answer it during citizen comments.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, is it about an agenda consent item?
Number two.
We'll address it in citizen comments or council comments, Chief. Thank you, Chief Latch. Okay, citizen comments. As you know, you have three minutes to speak. Come to the podium, state your first, last name, and your address. Councilman College will hold up a number one when you have one minute remaining. When your one minute's up, we'll tell you your time's up. If you keep talking, we'll tell you to please sit down. If you don't sit down, yours truly, our Deputy Chief, we'll ask you to please leave the chambers. Happy New Years. Okay, Ms. Walters, Marie Walters, maybe? I can't, the first name is sort of...
Yeah, it looks like Marie.
Marie Marley Walters, 3918 Kendall Drive, something about an easement. Okay. Not here. Ashley Haththorn, 6405... Okay. Ready? I wonder how somebody got on here and not here.
That was the first one on.
You don't start by talking outside?
That's right.
Yeah, have you said your name and address, then I'll start it.
Okay, my name is Ashley Haththorn, 6405 March Road is my address. I'm here on behalf of Brady Bossard, who owns property here in Goche on Carter Road. It's in an agricultural area of the city. You guys may remember, we came last month to present plans to construct a tiny home on that property, and we were denied. The main reason appears to be that it was, the council was unsure on how to classify the tiny home, and so we were put into a category with single-family dwellings where the minimum square footage is approximately 1,300 square feet. This tiny home, of course, has a square footage of about 320, and by definition, tiny homes are homes that are less than generally 500 square feet. So what we're here today is to hopefully propose to you guys to develop some sort of regulations or categories for these homes to be able to be constructed in your city. We did want to just kind of highlight the main reasons. Number one, Ms. Bossard is, you know, actively pursuing this as a home for her. She's a single individual, she doesn't have any dependents, you know, the necessity of additional cost and additional square footage is just not there. And without these regulations in place, you know, she's not able to move forward with this endeavor. So we hope that, considering some of the points that we have, number one, this is kind of an up-and-coming thing. They have been around for over a decade in the United States. They are growing in popularity. They're pretty successful in all of the areas that they're in. We know that the cost of living is astronomical right now. I mean, the cost to build a home is above $100 a square foot right now. So giving people access to be able to own their own home by creating some sort of designation for tiny homes is, you know, pertinent for us right now. And, you know, we feel that while they're not necessarily a single-family dwelling, they also don't fit into the category of mobile homes and Katrina cottages. These are structurally engineered plans, and so we feel that the council should take that into consideration as well. And then just reductions in energy and waste. There was some concern at maybe, you know, decreasing the property values of the surrounding areas, but we assure you that, you know, the value of this property is actually above what is neighboring the current property. And so that's basically what we're here to ask today, is that the council makes, takes some sort of action to be able to implement some sort of regulations for these so that she can move forward with her desire to become a homeowner and own property and, you know, live here in Goche.
Perfect honor.
Brandy Bossard, number...
Councilman College. Yeah. We'll speak, yeah. We'll speak and answer our council comments so we can...
My name is Brady Bossard, and my current address is 2012 Magazin, Street Ocean Springs. I come before you tonight requesting that you set forth regulations for tiny home approval. You've asked in previous meeting if there were future plans for my property. While my requested build is intended to be my residence, my hope is to be able to help others prosper in the future by utilizing the same concept. At the last council meeting, it was brought to my attention that the city and I share a common desire and passion to help the development of the youth today itself. But what about the youth who never get a chance to succeed? Who solely rely on individuals like you and me for resources to make that happen? Granting tiny homes would allow the development and further plans for my property, which include four acres designated to develop in my nonprofit organization, Transition Boulevard, where aging out youth come to restore dream and transition. With the help of my board members selecting eligible youth aging out of foster care, I will provide structured, elite, independent living program dedicated to these youth. Our mission is to prepare youth transitioning to becoming self-sufficient and living on their own. Transition Boulevard would provide life skills and training services, including money management, self-care, decision-making, goal-setting, and developing successful life plans. These youth have most likely experienced serious trauma, so counseling and therapy will be the priority on the front end to ensure their emotional well-being, ensuring that they have the tools to manage situations and their reactions, allowing for a safe, secure, and structured place to flourish. Similar programs already exist, like Pivot in Oklahoma. Without these programs in place, these youth aging out are most likely to face homelessness, joblessness, parenthood, early parenthood, depression, suicide, and substance abuse. These programs rely on tiny homes to make the programs accessible due to low-cost development, providing they would make it possible for independent, safe, tangible housing. I am currently working with DHS supervisors who have youth ready to be housed, so me asking for tiny home approval is way bigger than the square footage. I want to make a difference in the life of these kids aging out because no adolescent should have to face homelessness. Approval would show that the City of Goche is actively involved in improving the life of these young adults in the city. I hope we can come together on this pressing issue, on this pressing issue by making Transition Boulevard possible. And the first step is setting regulations in place for tiny home approval. Thank you.
Jason Gibson?
Jason Gibson, 1979, Bay Side Drive.
Ocean Springs, Goche.
Biloxi. Yes, sir. I came just, I'm her engineer, design engineer, came to answer any questions that you might have concerning container homes specifically. I would like to say something, what she, what they were talking about. If you're going to allow tiny homes, truly custom, unique tiny homes, you should develop a tiny home code. However, your current code allows for tiny homes, smaller structures, as long as you meet doorway widths, stairway widths, et cetera. The only thing they would need from you would obviously be just a variance if that particular zone required a minimum square foot. With that being said, I would like to answer any questions that you might have for container homes.
Well, really, this wasn't an agenda item. We already voted on that agenda item. It was a square foot variance at our last meeting less than 10 days ago.
Okay.
So...
So we got the variance?
No, you did not. It was denied.
Okay, for what reason?
It was because of the square footage requirement.
Okay, that was the whole reason for the variance?
That's what they requested, and it was denied. We did not, the board did not approve the variance, the square footage variance.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Moore, Charles Moore? And Mr. Moore, we will answer your question to that agenda item after. We won't take your three minutes to answer that.
Oh, okay.
State your name and address.
My name is Charles Moore, 1920, Westgate Park, Goche, Mississippi. I was going to ask about number two, is that going to affect our taxes, our water bill going to go up, or what?
No, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask about. And another thing, I'm still unressed about him resigning as our Councilman of Waterfall. And there's a word for what he said, I don't know, eight months ago, whatever. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Greg Canada?
Reading's Councilman, beggar.
Great, Mr. Canada.
Let's see y'all again. No, no...
State your address.
Oh, Greg Canada, 1453 Route Gentile, Goche. That's it. I just want to thank everybody, you know, for the service of the last previous years. And I know this year is going to be busy. But what I wanted to ask is, Martin Bluff Road, yes, we do see action going on, and that's a big plus. I have just two questions. One of them is, did they set a milestone yet? And the second one is, do they have a schedule of events? And the reason why I say the schedule of events, because when the first news came out that they was going to start construction again, they said they was going to close down one lane. So I started letting people know, hey, y'all want to get up early in the morning because they going to close the lane down. That still had yet not happened. But if there's a schedule of events and you guys know, then when that word come out, I can get it out and we'll know for sure if that's, if this is legit. That's all. I mean, happy to see work.
You're not alone. Is that all your comments, Mr. Canada?
That's it.
Okay, so we thank you for coming, and we haven't seen you, but the Martin Bluff Road, as you know, we're all elated that they are back on the project. As far as the updates and the key points, the contractor does give those to the city staff in their briefing meetings, and then they put that out to the public. So I don't know, have you downloaded the City of Goche app on your smartphone?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
But I will.
If you download your app, download the app, they push all updates out on the app and on our social media, which is Facebook and, Sam, what other platform do you issue it on?
We mainly do Facebook and the app.
Okay.
The app since I push notifications and you get it directly to your phone.
Phone, your smart device.
Okay.
So if you would download that, then they will communicate, and that's how they've been updating us on road closures, not only on that project, but any project, and also when you have water main breaks. Thanks to our new H2O service provider, if you've noticed, you've been getting more updates about what's going on in utility land. And they are doing a great job updating us.
Thank you.
So it's the gentleman right there in the gray and green hat. You can thank him in this company.
Good to see you guys out there.
But that's how they'll be getting those updates out there and updates on the project.
I just, I just got to get social.
And I can always screenshot it and send it to you, Mr. Canada, if you don't have... Okay, that brings us to our council comments. Council comments. Cameron, Councilman George?
Happy New Year, and I have no other comments.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I want to comment about the tiny homes. I do appreciate your professionalism and how you presented it, and I wasn't totally out on the tiny homes, just, but I am concerned about how it's going to be contained, because some people don't want them near a house that's $250,000 and you bring a tiny home in. So what the council is worried about, I'm just a straight shooter, so I'm just going to explain to you. I ain't, I'm not going to just block you out. I'm explaining to you straight. What more so the council board worries about is these houses being all over the city. I'm not out on it, because there is high rent. I've had people come to me about the rent. Rent starts at $1,000 and up. This is apartments, you know, so, and our youth don't have anywhere, or no one has anywhere to stay, and it does raises up the, when you mentioned, the homelessness. With the rent high as it is and jobs not paying as much, you got people teaming up trying to just survive. I'm seeing, because I'm seeing it with my own children. I was just blessed that I own property so that my children can start their life out and then be able to afford to live in the rent that's out now. So most youth are not, don't have that advantage. I'm just willing to make that sacrifice, you know, for my youth, for my children. But everybody don't have that advantage, so I do totally agree with you. And I do have, in my, I did want to present something, you know, that I'm putting together about lowering things, helping to lower things in the, throughout the state and within our city, because it starts with the state just bumping up our taxes. So the only thing I think that would be more beneficial, that would be more in agreement with this board, this council board, if you set it up and put more, more of them on the property, if you rent them out, that's fine. That would, that would be, that would help.
What if we did a planned unit development and brought it back?
Yeah, I'm good with you. I'm good with it. This is knowledge, so I'm good, but I ain't going to take too long.
You got three minutes.
What if we did a planned unit development and brought it back too?
If you can...
That's what you want to do.
Well, we will, let's let him finish, and then we will address it, because I think that's where lies the confusion. So you were not here, and maybe she didn't realize what she came and requested was not what you're thinking. She didn't come until she spoke tonight about all this other. That was never told to the city staffer in her application.
So, yeah, so something like that, that's why I'm saying if you put more parts, more of the, I don't want to say part...
Make it a community, Paul.
Yeah, make it a community, yeah. I could see that developing, because that's going on in other cities. I've seen these, I've been in Atlanta, Georgia, they have them in Atlanta, but they have them in like commercial business, like say for instance, you got a lot of commercial business, they got these sitting out in front of the commercial business. I've seen them done, so it's doable in cities. It's just the nature of how you do them. And tiny homes are becoming the norm, but they don't, multiple ones on one property is what they're doing. They're not just putting just one there, and then you got this acreage.
What was the, for her to live in, then eventually face?
I can see that.
But it makes more sense to do the planned unit development and bring that to you?
That's it.
That's what we did.
Yeah, that, yes, that makes more sense. So I'm not against business. I'm a business owner, so that would be feasible. I, we did... Right, right. All right, I'm finishing.
Yeah, Councilman Jackson, you state your comments, and then we'll move on. If he wants to meet with you after the meeting, you're not going to meet.
So, yeah, that was, that was one thing, and I had, and actually just funny that they came here and spoken addressed this, one of the things that I wanted to see this council board do, and I know it's a struggle to do this type of thing, but as they're trying to raise insurance and things like that with throughout the state, we need to find ourselves battling for our constituents, because this can raise up taxes, which mean there a future would be more homelessness. We haven't seen it like that in Mississippi, because we're more of a courtesy state. We respect others and try to look out for one another and things like that, but what if we reach the point where we cannot look out for one another? And if you look at California, and I'm going to close, if you look at California, we're trying to mimic the Gulf Coast like California. Yeah, you got, I mean, Las Vegas, and so forth, we're trying to mimic that style.
I thought you was talking about the homelessness.
No, 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 not the homeless. So when you, when we're trying to mimic that, that, that style, what happens is the homeless grow, because they're pushing out people who will be able to afford these houses. My house, like mine, in College Park, in California right now, is a million dollars. Just think about that, a million dollars. That's a million-dollar home. They got trailers worth a million dollars in a neighborhood. So if you pushing to this lifestyle, this is your future. Where would people be able to afford to live? And I'm going to leave you with that, and I got a conclusion of what we can do. There's a way, but I'm going to leave it at that. So I have no other questions. I wish y'all a Happy New Years, and thanks for coming to the City Councilman of City of Goche.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. I suggest you get what Ms. Jancy about your...
All right.
And she will help implement what you would like to see for Ward 2 in Goche. Councilman Gilat?
The day after we had the meeting, denying your request, I wrote an email to both the city manager and the city attorney. Now, I can give you just a couple of excerpts. Tiny houses are becoming popular throughout the country. I would like to request that we review requirements of other cities, particularly along the coast, as to their requirements of tiny homes. Third, maybe we should identify certain areas of the city in our ordinances as to where these could be constructed, installed, agricultural zones where y'all were looking at, designated trailer parks, you know? And with the cost of goods soaring, which y'all said it would behoove us to take a serious look as to allowing them in designated areas of the city. That I wrote to the city manager the day after the meeting, and I'm absolutely in favor of them in these particular, this particular way. And that's all I'm going to say. I don't have any other items.
Councilman Collins?
Just piggyback on what we're going on here. Mr. Ankerson, do you think it would be beneficial for them to come to the planning commission meeting on Thursday and speak in front of the board and potentially implement? Because normally when we do UDO changes at this matter, it comes in front of the planning commission first, and they do their recommendations, then it comes to council after we advertise for public hearings and all that stuff, so, you know, there might be different options. It might be better, this is my personal opinion talking, is get it to where, Councilman Gilat said, get it allowed in certain areas, because you might end up, I'm not saying it would, but you might end up getting more pushback by doing a planned unit development on a four-acre lot in lieu of a planned unit development... on a four-acre lot in lieu of a planned unit development on like a 20 or 30-acre lot. So I think what we need to do is look at this fashion of construction, see what, how it best fits in this city and move forward from there. And then concerning your question on the consent agenda item number two, we always do adjustments on water and sewer each month. If somebody has a leak, leaky toll or something like that, they can prove they fixed it, we can take off the sewer portion of their water bill and stuff. So it doesn't increase our utility rates at all, we just do adjustments for our water and sewer bills each month. So, Matt, Happy New Year and look forward to outstanding year ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Collins. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, considering the tiny home issue, I agree with Councilman Galot 100%. There are certain areas of the city that I think this should be allowed, and I go along with Councilman Galot on everything he said. And I do think we should come to a minimum square footage solution and talk to those cities and see what they're allowing, but we do need to come to a minimum square footage solution on that, on that issue. Okay, and move on to the Martin Bluff Road project. I was called before Christmas, a few days, that the potholes were in deplorable condition, and I drove it and they were, the bottom come out of my truck crossing some of them, they were so deep and bad. We had some rain. Every time it comes and rains, it washes out and we start all over again. The, I understand the contractors under contract to repair these potholes. I don't care if it happens every day, they're under contract to repair these potholes. Not once a week, not once every two weeks, or not because we're in the middle of holidays or whatever. Well, I got calls again today about terrible potholes just off of Homestead Boulevard, entering on Martin Bluff Road, and very deep, full water, cars dodging it and nearly wrecking and running into each other, having to get in the other lane. This contractor needs to be brought to their attention that they're under contract to fix these potholes as they get bad. They drive that road every day, they should fix them. If they're not going to fix them, the City of Gochay should fix them and give them the bill for it and charge them a car payment. That's all I got. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year to you. Councilman Collins, Councilman Elvin.
Reference to the tiny home, I'm not opposed to ideas like that. I was under the impression it was one resident and.
Councilman Anderson, I'm sorry, Councilman Elvin. Councilman Anderson, please mute your phone. Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do. I think it needs to be formatted differently like you did tonight and maybe readdressed back through the planning department as such. I'd like to thank all the city departments, Clearwater, H2O Solutions, and Waste Pro for the work you've done, especially through the holidays while we're at home celebrating. A lot of our people were out working, and I want to thank you for your services. We couldn't do it without you. You are the backbone of this city, what keeps us running, and I want to thank you for that. That being said, Happy New Year to all.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. I just want to, one, you know, as we all celebrated the end of the year, we had people still working. I have to say kudos to our public safety, our police were working to keep us all safe. Our fire was working to make sure everybody was safe, working accidents, putting out little small fires here and there. And H2O, I can't brag on them enough right now. Gochay should be proud. And when I say proud, proud is an understatement. The communication on a holiday between them and the city staff and to see it all work so we can push important notifications out to everyone, I can't thank you all enough. The call volume on my phone has gone down. Thank you. I don't mind taking calls, but us pushing the information out there helps with the call volume, not only to me, not only to the council, not only to the city manager, not only to the police department, not only to the utility on call, it helps all of us. So H2O, I can't thank you and your employees enough, but we are blessed to have you here. Also Waste Pro, I know people are concerned, they are getting around. They've had extra garbage out, they are still running. At 4:30, they were still out running, picking up garbage. So please note, they are coming, they might just be a little later than normal, but they have advised us, they are coming. As far as the tiny homes, I have to tell y'all, I've been a fan of tiny homes for a long time. Our square footage, unfortunately, you know, after Katrina, my great uncle could not build a little cottage on his beachfront lot down here because of the square footage. So it's a square footage, you know, as far as the square footage, we need to look at that in our unified development ordinance in general. I want to apologize because when you came here and I sensed that there might be a little more to your request than just a variance for the square footage, and we didn't learn that until tonight when you spoke at your comments. So I definitely, your vision is definitely a high need, not only in coastal Mississippi, but in the whole state of Mississippi. It needs to help, we need people, they need a foot. Instead of going across down here to our hotel where they're full of people that are having to live in there because they can't afford and find a place like you're trying to develop for them to live. So I don't want you to feel, don't feel like we're not receptive of it, and we have been in communications, we had a development want to come, they ended up not buying, but they wanted to know would we allow a container development on a large piece of commercial property here in central part of the area? And we were not, we could not turn them down because of it being a container home, because as you heard at your request, you're a container home. I have one going to be built over, and it's Ward Three, a guy bought some acreage and he's going to build a container home. Well, he's able to do it because it meets the square footage requirements. So I just don't want you to feel like we're against containers or tiny homes because we are in phase, I mean, they got Starbucks out of them in a commercial. And urban development is nice, but I think you should go back to, Councilman Anderson, I've asked you to please mute your phone. Okay, I apologize. So.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. No, it wasn't because he had texted me that it wasn't him. He could hear, it was echoing in his phone. So I just want you to know that we have been soliciting, and an urban development with container park is a great fit for our area. We are nature's playground, it is part of nature, and I do feel like, and in your envision, in a way it benefited you at not passing because you're wanting to add more, and you would have already had your one variance, so then it would have been you going through another process. So maybe it's a blessing that you get it all done at one time. Now that we know what you're really trying to do, we can partner with you and help make it fit.
Beautiful. I just needed to know how to move forward.
So we will get with, and we've already looked at, but unfortunately, it's been 10 minus three holidays, so seven days, that they've been able to even concentrate on the square footage type thing. But like Councilman Collins said and others, it will have to go before the planning commission, but we will have to direct staff. So if the council, if we're all in conjunction that we request that the city manager get with planning director, who gets with the planning commission, and let's look at tiny home ordinances and square footage changes to our unified development ordinance. Are we all okay with requesting our city manager to do that?
Well, the question is, do we want to go tiny home or do we want to go with Conex Box Construction?
Well, Conex Box Construction is already allowed.
Or Shipping Container.
That's already allowed. That's not the question.
Okay, so square footage is for specific zonings within the city?
Right. Because a container is already allowed with structural engineer.
Well, I mean, my concern was, you know, it didn't fall into the category of a Katrina cottage. A Katrina cottage is varying square footage from 300 to 645 square foot. Single-family or single-wide manufactured homes, about 425 square foot, and you get the triple wide. So I mean, those are all allowed via conditional use in an AG district. We just didn't have for that specific style of construction, which is why it fell under the square footage requirement, being it was.
The type of construction would still be considered, what I interpreted to be just single-family, well, we do not have a specific.
So that was my question, do we want to designate that as a specific style of construction or do we go with the square footage? Because I mean.
Well, that style of construction is already allowed. Am I not correct, Mr. Ankersen?
You're correct, unless Councilman Collins is asking, do we want to specify, make a definition for Conex Box homes or container homes and then designate that to a certain district? You may want to take a step further.
I mean, just make a more in-depth ordinance, but right now, you can build a container, I'm having it done right down.
Yes, 1325 square foot.
So what, so you're saying trying to designate it like a trailer?
Or Katrina cottage.
Guys, we're in a solved this in here.
Yeah, I just keep talking on and on. We're all in favor of the city manager working with planning and let's get some options available to, is everybody okay with that or not?
Please research. Yeah. I'll put it in writing.
Okay. Ms. Shantsey, did you hear the request?
That's my.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey.
Well, and maybe you should put the maximum occupancy of those for one.
Right. Okay, yes. So as you know, we will be working, getting back with you. You can get with Mr. Ankersen, but don't let your vision go away and keep being a voice for your vision. And maybe you need to be at the legislative conference in Jackson selling your vision. I just want to thank Gochay for a phenomenal year. We have a lot to be grateful for in 2023. I look forward to the opportunities that lie ahead in 2024. One of the key things will be kickoff to the amphitheater, and I hope everybody will be helped, excited as we are, because that is a big economic driver here for our town center. Let's let our light shine bright and continue to engage, enlighten, and enrich in Gochay. Just remember, it's your community. I wish you a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. God bless you all. Ms. Shantsey, any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Danos, I mean, Ms. Montgomery, any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Danos, any comments? Do we have a motion to recess until Tuesday, January the 16th, 2024 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galot, do we have a second? Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. We're recessed.